Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting Work Session for Tuesday, June the 10th. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, discussion, Ms. Rehneer?
Can we add something to new business or other business, I guess, other business?
After item number 10.
That'd be fine.
Permissible?
Maybe we should do it before 10, at 9.
This agenda typically doesn't include other business. Since it's a policy session, we have to only include items that have been actually advertised.
Okay.
So you couldn't add things to this agenda. You can to the regular meeting, but not to this agenda.
Okay, so when we get to that, I'll just add it.
To next meeting's agenda, yes.
Okay, all right. Policy review, Ms. Baker?
The policies that you have before you tonight are all policies that are tied directly to either a state statute, or a federal statute, or a regulation. So these are policies where you have very little, if any, leeway to change these policies. The first policy is Board Policy SS-12 regarding student fees and fines. This policy is required under the Family Educational Privacy Rights Act, otherwise known as FERPA. And you don't have before you tonight any revisions to this policy. I did, when I reviewed it, find a few very, very minor typographical errors, and they have revised the state, associated state regulations.
I hate to interrupt, but where are you?
I'm sorry, did I skip to the second policy?
SS-12?
Okay, I'm sorry, let me back up.
Fees and fines?
I skipped to SS-12. That policy is student fees and fines, and it is based on a state statute. Again, it is required under state law that we have this policy. This policy was recommended by the Tennessee Department of Education a few years ago in order to come in compliance with the state law and the federal law. Again, this policy doesn't have any major changes to it. The law hasn't changed in any significant way. They did revise the regulations, and there's some renumbering that took place in the state regulations that I will bring to you at the next meeting. But otherwise, I have no significant changes to this policy.
All right, Dr. Brown?
I realize that the policy is required by the state, but because of the type system that we have, there's some language in there that really does not apply to our system, such as lines 7 and 8, where it talks about courses offered for credit. I don't know if we could just say required to participate in courses, coursework, rather than courses for credit.
Those items that are set there are the actual definition of student fees as they're set forth in the state statute. That's why I did list them identical to how they're set forth in the state statute and the state regulations. We could...
Just other examples would be fees for graduation ceremonies in line 21, where it talks about parking fees, security deposits. Also, in line 53, it talks about the July board meeting. And right now, we're not having scheduled meetings in the month of July, so that might also need to be addressed.
Okay, I can look at those to make revisions to those. As far as the graduation ceremonies, that I definitely thought needed to be left, because we do have some fifth or sixth grade graduation ceremonies, and sometimes they do kindergarten ceremonies. I don't know if they ever associate any fees to those. I doubt they do. And security deposits, if some of the upper grades have lockers, I'm not sure if there are any fees associated with the lockers at all. But again, these came straight from, that's how those terms are actually defined in the law.
Dr. Brown, anything else?
No, it's just language that we have a policy that really doesn't apply to us, so I just hate to see it retained in the policy. Also, line 24, do we know what rule 0521-01-03, 0.03, parentheses 13 is?
Yes, that is one of the Tennessee Department of Education regulations that has been renumbered, and I will put the new number in there. It is the regulation that deals with withholding of student grades for debts owed to the school system, and it sets forth what a school system can and can't do relative to that procedure.
Okay. Ms. Rehneer?
I think Dr. Brown covered what I had, the same thing that we don't have a July meeting, so I think that could easily be eliminated. And let me see, I've got a couple of notes. I had some question on line 80, but I have to see what it was first. Oh, when it says that these matters might come to the board for final disposition, I think that's if someone did not pay a fine. Do we have an administrative directive or something that covers that?
I'm not familiar with one. I can find out before the next meeting, and that is a section that actually needs to be revised based on the regulations. Under the regulations, if the student and/or parent dispute the debt, the amount of the debt, or the application of any sanctions, the board must afford that student or parent the opportunity to appear and be heard.
Okay.
And I needed to find out, because that is exactly what it says, the opportunity to appear and be heard. I wanted to find out from the legal counsel for the Tennessee Department of Education whether that opportunity to be heard had to come directly before the school board, or if the school board could delegate their authority to any other staff to handle that situation.
And then I have another question on line 86. I think it has to do with the amount for the replacement cost of a textbook that we know the life is considered six years, but yet it says charges for the lost book would be the replacement cost of the book. I think in years past, we had a list of prorated charges, and so I think that that probably would apply. I don't think the fifth year, you're going to want to charge someone for a brand-new book, when the next year, you might very well buy another series or something. I don't know if it has to be spelled out in there, but I think that this, you know, that hasn't been done in the past.
I was just going to add a couple of things. It may well have changed since the time that my kids were in the elementary system, but the fees associated with lockers had to do with the rental of a lock. And that's, there was a fee associated with the rental of a lock. And the other thing is, I vaguely remember that we discussed in depth some time back that sometimes parents are in a situation where they don't pay the fee, and I'm not going to discuss why that might be, but that we had a list of options that a teacher could choose from, where a child could work off the debt by cleaning boards, you know, white boards and black boards, and things like that. Do we still have that standing, Dr. Gilbert?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's excellent.
So that means that if the parent cannot or does not pay the fee, then we're asking the child to work it off?
That can be an option. I think that would particularly, particularly come into play if you'd had some damage done in some way to property of the school, more so than anything else.
A book is torn.
Right.
And in the Tennessee Department of Education regulations regarding withholding of student grades for debts owed to the school, it does say that local education agencies shall afford the student and/or the student's parent the opportunity to appear and be heard, and we can apply other methods for them paying off that debt. So that is an option that you can afford to the parent or student.
If a child loses a library book, or is overdue for a long time, and they don't pay that fine, then am I understanding right from this policy, line 73, 4, and 5, that the child's report card can be held until that is taken care of, correct?
Yes. Now, what we would not do, and what typically you will find, is we will not withhold the records. So those records would follow that child, certainly, and I think legally, we couldn't do that, but as far as the report card, we could.
Okay, okay. Any other discussion on Policy SS-12? We have a motion and a second to approve on first reading, and you will make the changes.
Well, actually, tonight, I don't need an approval on first reading. I just need you to approve me bringing it forward for first reading at the regular meeting.
Okay, all right. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the next policy is Board Policy STU-14, Student Records Annual Notification of Rights. This is the policy, I'm sorry, jumped the gun before, that deals with the federal statute regarding Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act, otherwise known as FERPA. This is a policy that we are required to provide annual notification of the parents' and students' rights based on a recommended model notification issued by the federal, the United States Department of Education. I have pulled the current recommended model notice. It is much more detailed than our board policy currently is. I was planning on revising this policy to reflect the recommended language of the United States Department of Education's FERPA notice. I want you to know that the actual notice we have in the parent handbook does mimic the currently required model notice that's required by the U.S. Department of Education. We just had not carried that language into the actual board policy yet. But the parent handbook has, for the past couple of years, had that full language, more detailed language in it. So when I bring this back to you, I will include the more detailed model language that's required by FERPA.
Any questions? Discussion, Ms. Rehneer?
I just, I guess I have a comment. I think the next policy is student records, use of records, and I have some comments and questions about that one. But I think that it's good here to have parents realize that their rights, the children's rights, are protected, because there's so much discussion right now about records being available to other people. I know when we get into the next policy, some of that's going to be talked about, but we want everybody to understand that they do have rights and there are privacy laws.
And another issue that we'll probably discuss further when I bring the next policy back to you is directory information. I've reviewed the federal regulations relative to directory information, and you as a board can limit what you want to consider directory information. Right now, what this policy reflects is the whole list of items that federal law lets you, lets a board choose to consider as directory information. And directory information is information that can be released without the parent's consent. If it isn't designated as directory information, it can't be released without the parent's consent unless it falls under one of the exceptions that, as you indicated, is enumerated in the next policy. And those exceptions are specifically set forth in the federal law.
So can we, or should we, discuss now the limitations we'd like on the directory part?
Yes, if you want to give me some ideas of what your thoughts are for directory information limits, that would be great.
Well, maybe I should let Dr. Brown go first, but I certainly have an opinion. Let Dr. Brown speak.
Well, my question relates to STU-14.
Yeah, we're still on STU-14. Go ahead.
I know we talked about the definition of eligible students at the last meeting, and I understand the need to maintain records until the student becomes an adult. But the wording of the first sentence, to me, implies that we have to notify the parents of all current students, and all students who have been students at Murfreesboro City Schools until the age of 18. And we don't, we can't do that every year.
Right.
So I don't know if there's a way that we can change that language, but to me, that's a logistical impossibility.
Is that just something that's in the handbook?
No, actually, it is worded differently in the handbook. Let me get that language. In the handbook, it simply is a statement that says the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act affords parents and students who are 18 years of age or older, in parentheses, eligible students, certain rights with respect to the student's education records. These rights are, and then it begins to enumerate each of the rights. So that would, I would revise that first paragraph to be worded in that manner, and I think that will clarify your concern.
Okay.
That sounds good. So can, pardon me, I'm sorry. So if we're looking at the directory information, Ms. Baker, could you kind of, or maybe Dr. Gilbert, one or the other, have an idea of, is this directory information something that would go out perhaps in a school's PTA, PTO? I know in years past, we had a school directory where the children's names were listed by grade level, by teacher, and then the parents' names and addresses, and so on and so forth, and the parents could opt out of doing that. Now, that was years ago, so is that the kind of information, is that what this is pointing to?
Yes, it is. And directory information, we have, at this point in the handbook, defined directory information to include the student's name, their address, their telephone listing, their email, any honors and awards received, their grade level, their dates of attendance, their enrollment status, a photograph, and date and place of birth, the most recent school attended, and participation in officially recognized activities. Student ID numbers and social security numbers, those are not directory information. So that, at this point, is the information that we designated as directory information.
And that's, and that's because of policy, but I would welcome that to change.
I would really, as a parent, of course, my children are old now, but as a parent, I would not want all that information to get out. I would say it would be okay to have the child's name, perhaps the parent's name with it. I see no problem with the address or the phone number, but I wouldn't go beyond that. And if, does the parent have the option to say, yea, I want it, or no, I don't?
Yes, the parent has that option to notify the school that they do not want their child's directory information released, and then we will flag that as this child's directory information is not to be released. One other example of when directory information is released is if they publicize to the media the honor roll, or our basketball teams list names and ages and what school they attend. Those kind, that kind of information.
I would think that that could come if it were the basketball team. I think that information could come directly from the coach, and who would have a list of names, and this group of students is aged 10 to 12, or whatever, something like that. I don't think it has to be so specific, because I think, to me, we're taking away their privacy by doing that.
Right, and that is considered an educational record. It is under this FERPA law, can be released unless the parent opts out not to release it.
Well, my suggestion would be name, address, perhaps parent's name, and maybe phone number, but I wouldn't do anything beyond that, maybe grade level.
I'm not real sure that we need to have address and phone number.
Maybe not.
Now, just, you go back and think of what problems could be caused from a child predator, okay? I know Susie Johnson is a student at so-and-so school, now, like I do, you know, get hold of that directory, and I've got...
Her address.
Her address, her phone number, and if I want to get to her, ain't no way you're going to stop me now, because I got all the information. I have a problem with the way our world is today, with putting out...
Too much information.
Too much information on students.
Ms. Baker, authorized personnel, for example, school personnel, would still have access, for example, of that, so I think, I think that's a real consideration.
I think that's a little different.
Right.
Ms. Phillips and Ms. Smith?
Well, I agree with both Ms. Rehneer and Mr. Campbell. To me, the bulk of this information does not need to be made available. I can see that in a classroom, when they had the room meeting, the teacher could give the parents an opportunity to exchange phone numbers, with the parents could exchange phone numbers for things like PTO meetings, PTA meetings. Personally, I would like to see just the name, email, address, and, you know, possibly the phone number, certainly not the address, not the home address, certainly not a photograph. I don't know why they would need the date of birth. They could have the day, like November 7th, but they, you know, or something like that, possibly if they're celebrating birthdays, but I know that's not done much in classes anymore, except for possibly kindergarten. So, you know, I just, I just think for the security of the children, we really need to severely limit the public, access to this information.
And I would like, I concur, and I would also like that electronic email address removed. I think the parent's email may be appropriate, that's one thing, but...
Right, the parents...
As far as sharing with children, that's a whole different animal.
Yeah, just the parents.
Ms. Smith?
I guess I've seen some of these directories lately. Actually, they've gone, in the last few years, at my own children's school, they've been printed. They've gone from being printed to, but it costs too much, and they're being emailed, the directories are being emailed. I don't know if y'all have seen that. And I would say the name of the children, the name of the parents, and the email address would be, and the grade level of the child, of course, would be sufficient. So I was, I have to say, I was going to say put the address, but I see what y'all are talking about.
Ms. Rehneer?
I guess when I first, pardon me, said the address, it was more in terms that I was thinking of, in the past, in my classes, we did a class list with the addresses for birthday party invitations, and the parents could choose whether or not they wanted their children's names on that list, along with the phone numbers, and so on and so forth. Putting, to me, you're saying this is parent email address and not student email address, right? What would be your suggestion, Dr. Gilbert?
Oh, my suggestion? I'm very uncomfortable when we're talking about children. I'm very uncomfortable with most of this, because I feel like if parents want to share, that's something else. I think it's kind of like active consent, as far as some other things that we do. If there's active consent, and they have surveyed, they have asked the parents about that, and have permission of that, that's different. But what this allows is, and we actually had a situation this year that I had not encountered, where someone had asked for the names of the children and their home addresses, and I was extremely uncomfortable with doing that. When that comes to me, the way this is listed, then I pretty much have no choice but to share that, if they have not negated that. So I'd much rather err on the side of caution and say that, that if a child's address, if a child's phone number, if a child's email address, I'd rather have the parent give active consent for that than just have it blanket where we have no choice.
It might be, if you just turned it around, send it 7, I mean, line 17, where parents of students have two weeks of notification by the school in writing of items they designate to be used as directory information, rather than designate not to. That way, if they want the information there, they're going to say so, rather than us putting it out there first, and then them having to say no. Let them say yes to start with, and not put it out there as such.
Ms. Campbell? I think that that's a good solution. But when we're talking directory, are we also talking about those class listings?
Yes.
Like Mrs. Green's sixth grade class, and listing the names of all the kids, and the parent email, so they wouldn't have any way of reaching the other classmates?
Yes, yes, that is part of what directory information is meant to cover, and that's why FERPA made the exception under, for directory information, to make it easier for the school system to release what was considered less, apparently when they wrote this, less harmful information to release, and of course, nowadays, that, we know that that's not necessarily the case. But that's why they made this exception, that allowed school systems to release directory information for situations where teachers wanted to share the class list with other parents in the class, or the PTO, or they wanted to publish who is on the honor roll, or who got certain awards, because you notice one of the items is honors and awards received. That is one of the items. Also, for athletic teams, that specifically, when I've been researching some of the directory information exceptions, the athletic teams, their height, weight, is actually some of the things you can release under directory information without parent consent for those athletic teams. So that is the whole reason FERPA carved out this exception, but they did leave some ability for school systems to tighten what they wanted to consider directory information.
Well, with that said, if we eliminated using emails, you know, the teachers send emails every day, thankfully, I love that, to parents, and many of the times, you see everybody's email on there. So that would be a violation of the policy already, would it not?
Yeah.
So I would...
Of the parent email or the child's email?
Parent email.
Okay.
So, you know, when you get a parent, when you get a note saying we're going to have field day, they send a note, and all, most time, most of the time, the teachers don't do the closed parentheses, they don't do it in a way that you don't see all the emails. You do see all the emails listed, so therefore, they would be breaking the policy. I just would hate for something to be so challenging, and also, that's the way that we communicate these days.
Kelly, are they not talking here about the student email?
They probably are, the way that it's written. I'll have to go back to the actual regulation and double-check it, but if we want to clarify that we mean the parent email, and you've got to remember, this federal law is written to cover post-secondary situations, as well as our situation. So it's covering colleges, it's covering high schools, middle schools, elementary schools. So it is very broad.
Do you have something else?
I do. That, I was in line with what Ms. Smith was saying, whether or not this covered what the classroom teacher does and doesn't do. And I think perhaps, Ms. Smith, if the teacher took all the parent email addresses and made them into a group... them into a group, then I don't think the net, the email addresses would come through, right?
Some how they do.
Oh, do they? Okay. Well, so that may not work, but I was going to say, um, we don't want to make things any more difficult-
Right.
-for our teachers. However, they are just as concerned about the children's welfare as we are, so I, I, somebody come up with a plan, I think, again, student's name, perhaps parent's name, and if you say email as opposed to phone number, that's fine with me, but I don't think we need any of this other information. This would not limit the teacher from perhaps adding something in her classroom, would it? I mean, if the, if she sends a note out to the parents and said, "We want to do a class directory," would she be allowed to do it?
She couldn't release the information-
To the other parents?
To the other parents. What would have to happen is maybe the classroom parent at a meeting could say, "Anybody that wants me to contact them when we have a party, give me your address."
Right.
But the teacher, as a school system employee, cannot share that information.
Okay.
Could she send out a letter, though, that would be saying, "I, I am compiling a list of students and addresses and ask for permission to do that?"
Yeah, she could, she could get permission. Um, what about if I, um, try to send out, it sounds like this one, we may want to find out how information is actually utilized in the school setting, and what information they feel they still need to have the ability to share and utilize and release, and I get, I try to get a feel for that and then bring it back to you, as far as the directory information.
Mr. King?
I'll talk about a line 26, but, uh, the, would, and it reads, "Which the public would have access." I think what they're talking about there is the general public would have access, so somebody who doesn't have a student in school, goes back to Ms. Smith's point, if, if a teacher wants to email the parents, I think they could, because if a parent, if I forwarded the email to somebody else that didn't even have a kid in the school, it would be trackable more or less, like, we could track down who forwarded the email, if, if push came to shove, couldn't we? To, to, so that a teacher could have contact with his parents, but that would not be for the, that, that email, like, like Ms. Smith's, is not intended for the general public, and that, and it would be the parent's email address, not the kids.
Okay. Hold on. Ms. Phillips?
Um, thank you, Mr. Campbell. The, um, the one thing that I heard Ms. Baker say, and I remember back to being very important to the parents, is being able to have their children acknowledged when they're on the, the honor roll. And so, that would seem to me, I would hate to take that away from the parents, if, you know, I, I'll be interested to see if you find that that's important, Ms. Baker.
Mr. Barrett? Well, as a new parent, a lot of the stuff, I would not feel comfortable letting my, you know, having that information out there on my daughters, but I also don't want us to have these unintended consequences, like Kelly mentioned, about ways of communicating, honoring, things like this. I think we, I agree, we need more, we need more discussion about, you know, some of these items in here, like, how much of it is actually getting out there for people, or if we're gonna, if we limit this, are we gonna limit, you know, our teachers and our, and our students and things like that, as, as far as like, you know, breaking policy? We don't want them breaking policy, obviously, but we just, you know, we need, I think we need, I definitely need more discussion.
Okay, then I will take this, um, policy and the directory information issue, and try to gather information from principals and, um, get an idea for what they think is needed and what is not needed and what they'd like to see. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Yep.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Because of the time of the year, I may not get responses for the next session or maybe later.
Okay.
All right, the next policy is STU 16 regarding student records, um, use of student records, and that policy, again, is based on FERPA, the Family Educational Privacy Rights Act, and it, um, sets forth the times that we can release information without parental consent. I'm going to double-check it against the, the federal regs. I don't believe there have been any revisions to this particular section, but I want to make sure that it's still worded correctly. But you'll see there, um, when it starts there at line 17, that school officials may release information from or permit access to students' educational records without the parents or the eligible students prior written consent in the following circumstances. One of those is if we receive a judicial order or a lawfully issued subpoena, we have to release the information without, regardless of consent. Um, number two, this is the one where we're concerned about, is if the disclosure is an item of directory information. So, and that's where we got into a situation where a private citizen made a request, it was, it was a, a request that was actually benign for the children, they wanted to congratulate them, but wanted the names of all the children and the addresses so they could send them a congratulations. Well, because that information we had designated as directory information under FERPA, we had an obligation to release it, so that's why I raised the directory information issue. Number three is to comply with the requirements of child abuse reports to the extent known by the school officials. So if DCS or any law enforcement comes to us regarding child abuse issues and requests information, we have a legal obligation to disclose it. When certain federal and state officials need the information in order to audit and enforce legal conditions related to federally supported education programs, um, one example of that could encompass our cafeteria funds. They may want information regarding the students' payments when they're doing an audit or some, something of that nature. It could come in other forms, but that's just an example. When the school system is entered into a contract or written agreement for an organization to conduct scientific research on the system's behalf, to develop tests or improve instruction, provided that the studies are conducted in a manner which will not permit the personal identification of students and their parents by individuals other than the representatives of the organization, and the information will be destroyed when no longer needed for the, the purpose for which the study was conducted. And typically nowadays, when, um, an organization's doing that type of study, they've got regulations they have to follow where they de-identify the information and they must destroy the identifying information once the study's concluded. Dr. Gilbert, you may be able to explain that better than me. Also, number six, to appropriate officials, if the parents claim the student as a dependent for IRS purposes, um, to accrediting organizations to carry out their accrediting functions. Number eight, when a student seeks or intends to enroll in another school district or a post-secondary school, we have to disclose their records to them. To financial institution or government agencies that provide financial aid, that's typically one of those that probably doesn't reach down to us, more intended for high schools, I imagine, um, to, in colleges, to make the need, the needed disclosure in a health and safety emergency when warranted by a seriousness of a threat to the student or other person. This particular, um, portion of FERPA has had a number of opinions issued in light of recent events across the nation, where they have more clearly defined when, if, if we know that some child has written death threats, we can release information regarding that, if there is an imminent safety concern. And there are opinions that have been issued by the Department of Education that clarify what constitutes a health and safety emergency. If there's some sort of pandemic outbreak in a school, some sort of MRSA or, or flu that's, that's running rampant, and you need to release information to the students so that they can go seek care, it does give you some leeway with a health or safety emergency. But there are very, very specific opinions issued that detail how and when that can happen, and if those issues arise, I would definitely have to go back and review those opinions and make sure we do it correctly before it's released without parent consent. But those are some of the items, or those are the items, the exceptions set forth in FERPA that allow release without parental consent. Again, I'm gonna double-check the, the federal law and make sure that they haven't added any more exceptions.
Ms. Phillips?
I, my main concern is not, um, the, the individual numbered items, but the first paragraph, Ms. Baker. Um, I'm a little concerned about, uh, it's, it, to me, it seems a little bit nebulous, all these people that can have access to the child's record. My first question is, for example, it says, "A person serving on the school board." I could go get a child's record, and if it were for, you know, a legit, a legitimate educational interest, if I did that, if I requested, would that child's name and personal information be redacted?
No, and the reason for that is that children's educational information may need to be shared with you as a school board member, for example, if they have a discipline issue that they bring to you on appeal. We would have to share that, um, information for those purposes, but it would have to be for a legitimate school board purpose. It would have to be something related to your duties and responsibilities as a school board member. And the, the best example I can think is if, at some point, um, a child's parents appealed a disciplinary action to the school board. Because typically, and I know this is when parents get extremely frustrated, when two children have an issue at school, under FERPA, we can't tell parent of Johnny what happened to Susie in the discipline. We have to, we, we can just say we've taken care of it, we've addressed it appropriately. But under FERPA, we can't tell that parent exactly what we did to discipline the child that their child had an issue with. And, but you, as a school board member, if that discipline gets appealed to you, then you can see that information.
I, yeah, I understand the frustration. I guess the wording here is what concerns me, because it doesn't, it doesn't speak of the board as a consensus, it says "a person serving on the school board." Could we, can we change that to mean the board as a whole and not-
I will-
An individual?
I'm going, I'll double-check it against the definition set forth in the FERPA regulations. I suspect that this is how it's actually worded in the federal regulation. That's why they're listed this way, but I am going to double-check it against the regs to make sure they haven't revised that in any way.
Okay, you understand what I, what I'm saying?
Yes, I understand.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Somebody, Ms. Rehneer?
I think Collier was next. So, under all of these things, you know how children get recognized by Duke Tips and the People-to-People? That would be that they're, those programs are somehow getting information. So, is that, how are, is that legal? Would that be covered under this? How are they getting the, how are they getting the scores legally?
I'm not familiar with how that works at all. So I would have to see what the organization was and what, if any, exception they fell under.
I mean, I would like for them to have that information, but it, under this, I don't see how they would, because you have to have, it goes along with your T-CAP scores for the, for Duke Tips. So that would be off your student record. And then that's announced publicly, who's Duke Tips, and then, then the next stage-
I'll have to research that.
Obviously, it would be with the organization, I see it be sensitive, maybe to parents.
I'm sorry.
Do we do that in sixth grade?
No, it's, it's, um, it depends on when your child makes the scores. If you, if, it's a-
I thought with his, of course, others older, it was seventh grade when we encountered-
And now they ha, it may have changed, they may, I mean, you know, it's really taken off, so.
Yes.
It's so, I believe that it's fifth, in our system, fifth and sixth grade.
Oh.
And then some of our, some of the children even go beyond, you know, have national recognition by Duke Tips.
Mm-hmm.
So, and what, that's system-wide, because if you have a 95th percentile or above, but how are they finding this out if this is the law?
I don't know, but I'll find out.
Clarice was fourth grade.
Was it fourth grade? I just can't remember, but I know that it was within those, it may have been fourth, fifth and sixth, but it, it, it does go up to higher grades, but we don't have, that's not relevant. And then People-to-People is a program that I do believe that people are nominated, but they're getting the information from the guidance counselors, so that, so that somehow is out there.
You mean the guidance counselors are giving out the scores?
Somebody, okay, on the Duke Tips, somebody's giving out scores, and I don't want to stop that.
See, if, if we have their scores listed as directory information, that may be how it's getting released, because we had honors and awards listed as directory information before.
We're not putting out, I have no idea what other people's T-CAP scores are, thankfully. I mean, I don't think that's what-
So it's the T-CAP score?
It's coming out of T-CAP scores.
Okay.
You had, your child has to have a 95th percentile in certain categories for the, to have, be eligible for the Duke Tip program, and I would believe that there are children system-wide that are, um, participating in that program. And then, uh, there's this People-to-People program that, my understanding is that it comes through the guidance counselor.
Sometimes teachers can nominate, too.
For that, too, yes. So, what I'm saying is this doesn't allow for that.
I'll ask Karen, she'll know.
Thank you.
But what you're saying is the teacher is nominating the student.
Somebody is.
Some, or somebody-
Somebody, but not on the Duke Tip. The Duke Tip is a solid score. It, but somebody's providing that information.
Okay. And if the parent is okay with that, it's okay, but we need to make sure that the parent is okay.
I, I-
In other words-
I'm okay with it in general, I'm just saying not according to this policy. It's not like that, so.
Mr. King?
Just kind of a general question, is, is there a record or a listing of people, agencies, entities who have asked to have access to records or information? Like, for, on the Duke Tip, for example, I, I would, and I'm assuming that part of filling out the form is by you signing here, you agree that your scores will be submitted to the Duke Tip people. I'm just curious, is there a way for us to know who has requested access? I mean, is there a list out there that, that we would have?
I'll, I'll ask Karen to, to come at the next, at the official board meeting and as well on that.
I imagine, though, that you're correct. When, when I fill out the form-
Mm-hmm.
And I say it's okay for the school to release the scores for my child, then I'm giving that permission-
You, correct.
So that guidance counselor or teacher, either one, can release those scores.
So it's in the fine print, so to speak. But I'm just curious if there's a list of entities, technically, we've done business with, if you will.
Ms. Rehneer?
He plays the Duke Tip.
Um, I know, Ms. Baker, that these forms are federal and, and TCA and everything. On, again, this is probably something that relates to what Dr. Brown said. In line six, I, I'm sure this has to do with high school or beyond, that a parent or student serving on an official committee, such as disciplinary or grievance committee. To me, I, if, if it's possible, we need to strike student, 'cause I can't see a student serving on any kind of a committee.
Well, I think we have, um, set up in some of our higher, our higher grades, didn't we set up some sort of peer review, or we were moving towards that?
I think in the past we had that, I don't know that we still have that now.
We did that years ago, yeah.
And with this new leadership movement, I would-
Oh, okay.
Be a bit surprised.
Okay, gotcha. Um, in lines 11 to 15, where we have, um, the legitimate educational interest, again, going back to what I said earlier, because there are some folks who seem to think that records are getting out and shouldn't be, I think that this at least spells out the legitimate educational interest, and I think that's real positive. Lines 28 and 29. "When certain federal and state officials need information in order to audit or enforce legal conditions related to federally supported educational programs in the school system." Do you have, and I hate to hit you with this suddenly, what would be an example of that?
Um, I gave you an example relative to, say, um, if the USDA came in to audit our cafeteria-
Cafeteria, okay, that's what I thought.
Or Office of Civil Rights came in to audit, you know-
Okay.
Any issues.
And then on 30, lines 30 to 35, this would be, um, scientific research on the system's behalf. I think this goes along with what Ms. Phillips said about redacting the personal information. Can it be redacted before that information went out to a group? So that there's no name associated with- So that there's no name associated with the result?
Typically, when we, when we have requests for research, that institution's gone through IRB approval, through, and that's their first step. But typically, when it comes back to us, there's a, there's a process we go through. And one of the things that you'll see there is, we may change the name over to a number of a child, for example. So, I, I, I feel comfortable with, with that and what we're doing. We, uh, there are a couple of us that always look at those, we make sure that whatever we have in policy and administrative direction is followed, and, uh, we're, we're pretty careful with, with what information goes out and what it looks like. The other thing I would say about that is that what we're looking for in this particular school system is not research for the sake of research, but it's research for the benefit of children. And so, that makes a difference, too, with what we approve.
And then the, um, lines fifty-six to sixty-three, um, authorized school officials may release information from the record if the parent or that eligible student, which we may or may not need in there, um, gives consent. And I'll, the way it's spelled out with each of those bullets, the five bullets there, would that be for the release of any records, or would that mainly be for something like a university study?
No, it's for any records. I actually have a FERPA consent form that each school has, and they utilize when we have, um, records requests, um, made. And, I mean, the most common time I have to use the FERPA consent form is when a, parents are going through a divorce and they want us to release their child's records to their attorney. They have to fill out a consent form authorizing release of the records to the attorney.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If, if my memory hits me right, in most cases, as Mr. King said a minute ago, when you have a Duke University or somebody else, and they want students to participate, the parent has got to agree to let that student participate, even if it's just a grade level, a classroom, before that student can participate in any of those, whether it be research or testing or whatever. Am I right? Did I remember correctly? Okay. So, at that point in time, we've got parent signatures as saying, "Okay, it's okay for Kelly to be used in part of this ongoing testing program."
Or, and where in some cases, you're going to have associated organizations, too.
Yes.
I think that makes a difference.
Okay. Somebody, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did, a couple things. One is, I'm just interested in how many, you know, research-type groups, organizations request information. I'm just, just out of curiosity, that's my first question. And my second question has to do with CD Channel Three. You know, occasionally, they go to the schools and they'll talk to kids, and, and they might say, they, they typically don't use the child's last name for security reasons, but this is, you know, Jimmy at Casey Lane, and, you know, this and that's happening. Or, we're taping DARE graduations where the children's first and last names are, are given in those situations in their school. This would not affect that, would it, Ms. Baker?
Well, that is actually directory information, the photograph of the child and the name of the child and their grade. Also, in our, um, parent handbook, in the section where the parent signs off, one of the things that a parent signs off is an authorize, authorization for their child's, um, image to be utilized on, um, Channel Three. That's actually, we've, we've included that in there so that we can film school programs and, um, film DARE graduations, et cetera.
Right.
Now, the parents do have the option to refuse to sign that and say, "No, I don't want my child filmed for any of those." And it's the school's responsibility to flag that and make sure that's known when a DARE graduation comes up. And they'll share that information with the, um, people here at Channel Three that go out to film them, and they'll be sure to make sure they edit the right sections if that is the situation. I think it's extremely rare that we have anyone make that request. I'm not familiar with anyone having made that request.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, Ms. Baker?
Okay, um, then I will do some more work and research on this policy and bring it back to you. Um, the next policy is Board Policy STU Seventeen, Name on Pupil Records. Again, this is based on Tennessee Code Annotated forty-nine dash six dash fifty-one oh six, which mandates that the, um, name on a child's birth certificate or on their, if they have had their name changed through adoption or through a court order, that that is the name that is included on their, all of their school records. We have said that if a parent wants their child called by a different name, we'll add that to the record, but the name actually on the official legal document, their birth certificate or adoption papers, or any court order name changes, will be their official name on their student record.
Okay. Questions? Ms. Barrett?
Um, you said it's Tennessee code. Is, do you have it at the bottom? Are you going to add it?
Yeah, I'm going to add that to the bottom. That's one of the things that this needed to have added, was the legal reference.
And it says, "Birth certificate unless name be legally..." I guess my que, what if, what if they don't have a birth certificate, or what, I mean, any other document? I mean, that's my question. I mean...
That's a good question. I don't know how we handle that. I haven't had that question raised before, had that situation occur.
This is pretty, you know, straightforward, black and white, so...
Right. And the, the state law says that, um, a student shall be enrolled in the name that appears on the student's certificate of live birth or certificate of birth by adoption.
Okay.
And then it goes on to have a caveat that name, um, name changes due to marriage, which we won't have that situation, or court ordered name changes will be entered on the student record upon receipt of the appropriate court document.
So, there's, they kind of left that off, or...
It doesn't have...
What was the question? I'm sorry.
If they don't have birth certificate, or adoption papers, or, I mean, this is pretty straightforward, so I'm just asking, just asking the question.
Dr. Brown?
Uh, line three, where it says, "A parent insists on using a name other than that shown on the birth certificate." Is that in the state mandate?
No. That is something that we've agreed to do. Apparently, when this was originally written in, um, seventy-nine, they'd agreed to have that, at, put those names on there, so we've...
To me, that only confuses the issue, and I think it would be more straightforward if we, uh, stayed with, uh, the birth certificate, if that's available or legal changes.
Okay.
And I do think it would be beneficial to talk, uh, with some of the staff about that, Karen.
Yes. I, I know I've run into at least a couple of situations where we've had, um, a parent that was absolutely insistent that their child be called by a certain name, but it was not their legal name. And I had to explain to the parent that they, if, we had to use their legal name on their birth certificate, and, but we would, you know, under this policy, have, you know, John Smith, also known as John, you know, Baker. And then we would have that on there, but we had to have their legal name on the document until the parent had actually gotten a legal name change done. So, I have run into those situations, and that was one way to, you know, satisfy the parent that at least we would have the name they preferred somewhere on the record.
Ms. Renee?
I can back that up because I know of a couple of situations. For instance, the name Bubba. We had a Bubba one year that the parents absolutely insisted that was the name he, this child was to go by. And no one, all the way through school, would have really known his name had it not been on the records. And even when they looked at the records, of course, they found the last name, but we had to put in parentheses, "That child's name," what he was called by. So, I think, I understand where you're coming from. It certainly makes it more legal and clarified that way. But if you've got someone who's adamant about, "My child will be called by this name," you almost have to do it so you have the identification.
Well, I'm a victim.
Are you?
Butch is not my legal name. And if you call me anything other than that, I'm not going to answer you, so it's been that way sixty-eight years. We're not going to change it now. But I don't...
Is that on your records?
No. It's not on my record. No, my legal name is on the record, has been all the way through school, but...
There you go.
So, I don't, I don't have, I don't have a problem if, a lot of kids have nicknames that they go by for a long time.
They live with them for sixty-eight years.
That's exactly right, yeah. Dr. Brown?
I guess my point is, if we provide a loophole, people will use it. If we say it's policy that we go by the legal name, then that's what we go by. So, I, I'm not going to discuss it anymore.
I just, I just think it's, you know, things change, and we don't always understand why or the backstories, but respecting what may well be the child's wish, um, as well, or the parent's, um, I think is important, you know? Keeping the focus on them is, is what's important. And of course, of course, their document must have their legal name on it. So, that's just my thought. Thank you.
So, what you're saying, Kelly, is that, what I'm hearing is, isn't it, whatever the legal name is, that's what the child has got to go by?
Well, that's what's on the documents. That's what we report to the state for the test scores. But we may have, like she said, in parentheses, "Also known as."
Okay.
You know, and then the, "Also known as." I think the issue really comes more when it's the last name, the parent was the last name changed, and it hasn't legally been changed. That's where we've had some angst, I believe.
But we're not saying that they've got to go by the legal name, right?
No. Well, the teacher can call them Butch, if they want to call.
Whatever they want to, okay.
Yeah, then Butch.
Sure, some of them have been called worse than that. All right, any other questions on STU Seventeen? All right, thank you, Ms. Baker. I guess we have budget amendments. Does that go to Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
All right, your own.
Thank you. Uh, the next three items are budget amendments. The city approached us about having us record some things slightly differently. And if I could just do the, uh, do item, Agenda Item Three first. This is from our two thousand thirteen School Debt Service Fund. This is, the document that we provided, um, to you is what the city put together. All this one is, is a paper transfer so that we're reporting the same as the city is reporting. There's no, no gain or loss for us at all. It's just they asked us to approve this document because it's the way they are reporting, reporting the debt service for schools. So, the first one is just a fairly simple one, just a paper transfer that they've asked us to approve. It's based on what our estimate, what the city's estimated number was versus the budget number, and that's what, that's what the difference is. Again, there's no money in, no money out for us. This is paper for the city so that our documents align with their documents.
Any question? Next.
We'd ask, uh, they've asked us that, to approve this one. You want to take them all at once, or one at a time?
Oh, we need to approve, approve them by vote.
Yes, we're asked to do that.
Some moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Renee motion? Dr. Brown, second to approve Agenda Item Three.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right. Item Four.
Item Four is, is the city's budget proposal for fourteen fifteen. What they're asking us to approve on this one is the way it's recorded with revenues and expenditures. Again, there's no money in and out for us. This is to make sure that we're aligned with how it's reported on their documents and ours. And this stuff all came about because we're both preparing for our audits, and they wanted to make sure that we're all speaking the same language together, since we are Department of the City Government. So, they've asked us to approve this one, uh, as far as how revenues or expenditures are reported. And this is, again, is their document that they're, that they sent to us to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Seconded.
Mr. Barrett, Ms. Smith, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Item Five.
Okay, Item Five is, uh, relates directly to our, the school board's budget document. What they've asked us to do is create a new page in our document. If you've never seen this page before, it's page number thirty-three. It is in the packet that we had for you. It's the new, it's a new page thirty-three. And what it is called is "Other Uses and Transfers." It's a code ninety-nine one hundred. And they've asked us to report our expenditures for our computers and for the money that we have for energy efficiency. They asked us to report it this way. How we've reported it in the past is through individual codes, like, for example, the computers have been reported through the regular instruction on page fourteen. And on the, um, energy efficiency loans, they've been reported on page twenty-six. That's the way we've always reported them, uh, to you. Well, the city has asked us to put, separate those out from our budget and put it onto its own page, page thirty-three. So, what we've given you is the current page fourteen of what you've already approved, and then the revised page fourteen.
Have you got those for us?
Uh, they were sent out.
Newbody's page.
They were sent out online.
Should be online.
I didn't find it.
If you pull up the agenda, they should be, should be on there.
Does this go with that service?
Okay.
Keep going down.
So, the first, page fourteen to page twenty-six are the originals, and the second, page fourteen and twenty-six are the revised.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And then page thirty-three is the new page in the budget document.
The new addition.
Now, the good news to this is, we put in your budget four hundred thousand dollars that this, uh, that we expected to spend for the computers. The city has determined that we're not going to incur that expense until the next budget year. So, we had to change two documents. One is our estimated expenditure this year, and then rolling into next year's. The slight difference is that they said, instead of the number that we, we anticipated being a four hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars, the city says it's really going to be four hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. So, the good news is, it's not hitting us this year. It's going to hit us next year. The bad news, or not so good news, is it's going to go up slightly, a few thousand dollars. Uh, and then, what you'll see in the documents on fourteen, the old versus the new, you'll see where we've made these adjustments and put them on page, uh, thirty-three. So, there is a, there is a difference in your budget on this one, so this won't affect your overall total budget. You know, that's where we are in that.
Instead, it won't, I'm sorry, is that okay? It won't affect the overall, or it will with this figure?
No, it will. It'll affect it, it'll affect it, uh, an additional amount of money for the expenditure on, on, from four hundred and nine, sixteen thousand up to four hundred and twenty-six thousand.
Ms. Phillips?
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson. I am really not clear. Now, this, the much, the money for the computers and the energy efficiency, okay, you're there saying that the money for the computers will not come out of this year's budget?
Not the one we're in right now that ends in, at the end of this month.
Oh, okay, all right.
It comes out the following. So, what we did was, we, since we got the computers, we anticipated they would start the payments, you know, right away.
Immediately.
They didn't. They're doing it later.
Okay. And why, why energy efficiency? Why has that moved?
Well, the energy efficiency is when we did the retrofits on the lights and the HVAC.
Right.
The way the state establishes those loans, they're interest-free, but how they establish it, it has to be through the county or city government. It cannot be through the school system. So, what we did with the city, they were gracious enough to establish the loan for us, but we pay the note, basically, is what it is.
Right, right.
And we pay the note through the energy savings.
So, but, but we're paying the note currently, though?
Yes, yes, we are.
Even though this is...
And that's why, so they just wanted to change how it's reported. That's why, you know, for us, we've always been reporting it.
Right.
But we've reported it within specific categories, and they wanted to put it on one page. It, it's, it's no problem for us. It's easy.
Uh-huh. And it just mostly has to do with the audit?
It's a change in format, so the audit, so the audit for the city and the audit It's a change in format so the audit, so the audit for the city and the audit for us, when they look at the stuff, it's the same. It's worded the same way.
Do they, does the city have the same auditors?
No, they do not.
Interesting. Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Motion on item five?
Some moved. Second.
Dr. Brown, Mr. Barrett, thank you. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
Thank you.
The, the next item that you have, the police department, as you know, they are tremendous partners with us. They are applying for a grant. That grant would allow them to expand what they're already doing with us as far as helping us with positive learning environment in our schools. If they get the grant, it'll be a bonus to that relationship. If they don't get the grant, it really won't change what is currently happening anyway. But because I will be assigning a memorandum of agreement with them, if they do get the grant, they need for you to be aware of that so that they can proceed with the grant application. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention tonight. And I think that's really all we have to do, isn't it Kelly?
Yeah.
With that, okay?
I have a comment.
Ms. Phillips?
I just want to, you know, applaud our relationship and our partnership with Murksboro City Police. They do an outstanding job for our children and I appreciate that. And I hope they get the grant.
Me too. Yeah, I think it's going to be tough competition, but we'll see. We'll see. They're good.
Hobgood Roof?
Hobgood Roof. We did a, a survey of all of our roof structures a few years ago and, and the section that has failed at this point, wasn't supposed to fail yet. They've just decided it was ready to go. So, we didn't anticipate this expenditure coming to us at this time, but it is. And what we did was we put together a base bid for the section that is leaking now and then bid alternates, which is all the same old roof structure. Now, obviously, we've had a lot of new roof put on Hobgood, but this is the older stuff and the older sections. It was supposed to have a few more years of life expectancy, but it just, it's deteriorated now and it's no good. So, we got leaks. So, we went and put out the main, the bid on the base bid is the part that's leaking now. And then the add alternates, as you see, additional add alternate one through add alternate five is other options we can do. The low bid on just the base bid, which is the part that's leaking, is $55,847,000. We are asking that you approve the base bid and get us through the part that's leaking now so we don't do any internal damage. And then, as you know, we're rolling the dice on, on roof structures anyhow as far how long they'll last. But we, we need to replace that section of it. We would have to pay it out of our fund balance because it's not in any, any budgets at this time. This is something that's been thrown at us now. You know, we really doesn't have a choice but to bring it back to you and say, hey, we've got a roof, a leaking roof in multiple areas and we need to repair it.
So, you're only asking for approval on the base bid?
We're asking for the, the approval of the base bid of $55,847. If the board wants to spend additional monies at this time, we can, but we're, as you know, we're in a, we're being very cautious about what we're doing at this point.
Okay. Ms. Renier?
That was going to be my question, but also on this chart of figures next to that $55,000, then it's 45,500 for, I can't scroll up that far, the alt add, alt one and alt two. So, is the bottom number the total once we add these figures, right?
Yes, ma'am. Right. So, you can see that, that they change depending on how far you want to go, whether you...
Right.
The smaller amount or larger amounts, then totals change.
Okay, so what, are you able to tell us what the alt one and two and three might be so that we would have a better understanding of, like, what is this base, what is this cover? Where is, you said the leaks, but what part of the building is that?
As you walk in Hobgood in the old, the old...
The old entrance?
And go straight down that main hall, that's it. And all the other pieces off of it are little subsections of the roof. That roof is split up into many heights. And so, each piece was broken out into a different height section.
And that's what each of these alts, whatever, are?
Right. The one that's leaking now is the base bid. The other ones are about the same age, so we're anticipating it's gonna...
So, they're going to go off?
It's gonna go eventually. But we're only asking for the base bid now because of our concerns about making sure we have our, our cash and our fund balances.
I know that, that fund balance is a big issue for us, but what does Johnson and Bailey recommend?
Well, they said we've got to do the base bid. They said if you can do the rest of it now, that's great because it's eventually going to deteriorate. And when you do packages of all together, if you're going to do the whole thing in one year, you're better off doing the whole thing now. If you're going to say, okay, well, this, this roof may last another two years to another five years, then you're probably better off waiting a little bit because you don't want to spend the money if you don't have it, right, available to use it.
What are the, the columns BB, PA? What does that mean? Next to the bidder's names?
Oh, that's, that's, when they do a bid, they have, they have, I don't know exactly what each one of those abbreviations stand for, but they have certain things they check off to say, okay, did they respond on this? Do they have, do they have this piece?
Okay, so it really doesn't, it really doesn't affect us?
No, as long as those check...
Because I thought it was base bid, but there are too many alts to correspond with them?
As long as those check marks are there, that means they qualified.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Phillips?
Um, just a couple things. First of all, the part of the roof that's not leaking, has anyone inspected it? Did it give some kind of estimate as to how long they think it might last?
Well, we did that initial inspection of it and it was supposed to last at least another two to three years.
Okay.
And they were all, how we rated them was red, yellow, and green.
Uh huh.
And some of those sections were rated green. The one that died was rated yellow, which it should have been still good.
Right, right. Then my next thing is just for the folks at home. I think sometimes when, I know when I was new on the board, I always wondered, okay, they're taking the low bid, but is the low bid, do we know it's a good company? And I, that's no reflex on this company. I'm just saying, can you explain to the folks at home how, how we know that these companies that we may take in at the low bid, that they're good, reliable companies?
Sure. There's six companies that bid on this particular thing, project. Each one is qualified by our architect to make sure that they have the qualifications based on their past experiences with them, experiences with other builders. And what they do is they say, okay, these people are qualified. Then when the bids come in, they, they've met all the specifications asked for and they, this architect specifies the type of roof, the, the length of time that it is warranted for, et cetera. And each one of our roofs are made differently, so when they do a roof, they have to look at all the different structures on those. Any project that's over $50,000, we have to have an architect go through the process. And we're using the same architect, Johnson and Bailey, who actually was involved with all of our buildings. So, we're very comfortable that they know who, who to get. The bidders here that we've used, I know we've used Porter, I know we used Marion and Green, I know we've used those before. So, I'm, I'm comfortable that they have chosen, you know, reputable builders.
Thank you. I think that's helpful for the folks at home.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Smith?
Where does this leave our fund balance if we approve this?
Well, the fund balance, because, because of the money that the city didn't charge us this year for the computers, that added $400,000 in your fund balance over what we were. So, we're, we're in $400,000 better shape minus whatever we do here from what we were projecting before. So, to answer, without pulling out the numbers, getting the exact numbers...
Approximate?
We're about two, we were about $2 million.
So, we're about 2.4. Is there anything that this would take the priority over that we had on the list to do for this year?
Leaky roofs are really, really high up there.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, that, is there something that we can put off? If this, if this were at my house?
Yeah.
I'd have to put something off. So, I'm just wondering if, if there's something that we have that we said that, that we budgeted for improvement-wise that we could put on the back burner?
I didn't really look at it that way. I can, I can pull because of your capital outlay. We didn't, we didn't put as much in capital outlay. I can go, I brought the list with me if we, if y'all want to look at that as a consideration. I'd be glad to do that.
And we're just tight. I just know we're tight. But the $400,000 certainly helps.
Yes.
Though it's just putting off money for next year.
Yes, well, two of the bigger, our capital outlay total budget was $941,000. Of that, $200,000 was, was to go for new furniture and the display systems at Discovery School. John Pitterd for the VoIP phone system. Maintenance department was for a used van and some playground mulch and some window replacement at the schools. Reeves Rogers was library books, just establishing the new school expenditures and the same thing overall creek, we really need to leave those alone. The transportation department was the, was a new bus that we're going to need. And the only other one that we talked about was the infrastructure of $250,000 for if we get the E-rate money that we put in. So, that's kind of a, a safety valve on that one. Those are the options that we had. We really wasn't thinking we would want to change what you've already approved on that to delay it. This was going to be using fund balance dollars that we'll have now because of the technology being pushed back a year.
Someone over there, I think Ms. Renier did.
You're saying, bus, didn't we say that if the state approved the additional mileage or whatever it was, that we would not need to buy the bus?
We, we're putting, we have, you have approved one bus, so we have a spare bus. But yes, we did save those. The state is doing it, we have, we have requested that they come and do the inspections. And so, yes, we are going to save those, which means it'll give us the opportunity to have one extra spare.
We had originally had two then, right Gary? We had originally had two then.
We originally had two and, and we, we reduced it to one. So, we have one special ed spare and one regular ed spare.
So, I have, I have one more question and this is, you know, me asking this question because I don't know. If this company comes and does the base bid, does that section over the main doorway, then if the next section fails and has to be replaced and we don't do that right now, we just go with the base bid, would we then have to go through the bid process again? Would that company be hired immediately to come back and do these alternates? Or how, how does that work in the future?
Typically, what, what happens is they're given a certain amount of time that they have to honor the bid for. And I'm sorry, I don't remember if it, if, how many months it was that they would honor the bid for. But if it happens, say, a year or two later, we would have to go back out to bid.
And so, would they necessarily, if a second company were hired then with a different kind of bid, would their roofing and everything match what this company's doing? And is this all going to match the new section?
It's all based on our specifications that was drawn up in the architect's documents. So, it would, the quality would match. It may be a different manufacturer of the roof, but it has to have the same warranties and guarantees.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Phillips?
I guess, I guess I'm just not grasping this as a whole. All right, the money, since the city council is not making a spending, is currently back in our fund. That's right. For how long?
Well, we have to spend it next, next fiscal year, starting July.
So, it's, it's not, it's not really like we have new monies, new funds. It's just that it's on a delay, right?
Yes, but we had already established, what we did was we put as an estimated expenditure in this current year's budget, we put $400,000 in for the budget we're in right now. We also put in the budget that you approved, the $416,000 or $19,000 into next year. So, that money was already in next year's budget. So, you've already approved that part, plus the little bit, they added like $10,000 more to us. So, what that means is the money that we put in that we anticipated spending now flows through the fund balance.
Uh huh. All right. So, we, what you're saying to me, Mr. Anderson, is that there is money that is, that is now free? That is not, that is not designated?
It's not designated, it's not designated for a specific cause, it just goes to the fund balance.
To the fund balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. I'm kind of with Ms. Smith on this, about finding a, a way to, to check and balance. You know, I, I heard you mention the windows and the van. I'm sitting there with replacement of windows and van, the van for, I guess, the maintenance department, would that add up to the $55,000? I wish I had the budget book in front of me, but I don't.
Well, the windows, the windows are for the windows at Casey Lane, Missygo and Black Fox, the thermal panes.
Okay.
But that's only $20,000. The, a used van was $12,000.
Thirty-two.
Site development, playground mulch is $25,000, but we have to do that.
Right.
We have to, that's a safety feature.
Could the windows and the van wait a year?
Windows could. I don't think the van could because we have to have a van for the person that we put in to cover the ex, you know, the new school. The windows are the ones that are fogged up in those schools that are...
I don't like it, but I just also know that we have to be very good stewards. And we are very close to our, our limit.
Any other questions? You need action on this?
Yes, we, we've got our bids, we're ready to, to get on it. We want to get it done before school starts, whatever you approve.
Ms. Barrett?
I say we make a motion to approve the base bid for Porter Roofing, $55,847.
You heard the motion? We have second?
Second.
Dr. Brown, second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. The next item is community eligibility. In 2010, the federal government passed a Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act. And with that, they put together what's called Community Eligibility Provision. It was piloted in 11 different states. So, right now, for the last three years, this program has been run by 600 LEAs and 4,000 schools have done community eligibility. What, we have asked our food service department, Ms. Shealy, who's here this evening, we asked her to look at that, is this a possibility for us to adopt community eligibility? Now, what community eligibility is, it means our students would get breakfast and lunch at no charge to them. So, breakfast and lunch would be obviously made available to them at no charge. And because of the way our free and reduced population, because of the way it's reported through the TANF report, which means the state report on, on people who qualify for free and reduced, that we would qualify to participate in this program. Monetarily for us, it's really a no win, no loss, no gain for us. We're looking to break even on it. But it provides every child in our system with that, whether they be a reduced or a full, full-priced child. The program has been successful in increasing the number of people who actually eat at school for breakfast and lunch. And the, the federal government has now adopted it nationwide effective July 1st, 2014. So, we're bringing it to you tonight to, to have you have any questions for us, something we would like to do for the district to provide these meals for our children.
So, we have to apply for this grant, correct? Is that right?
It's not really a grant, it's a, it's a program that the feds have, have put together. And it's in place, it's in place for, it's a four-year window, Sandy, three or four-year window?
It's a four-year window. Every year, you can renew or lock it up.
Okay. I've asked her to be here tonight in case you had any questions because she is the one who fills out the paperwork and she's the one who knows what the program is all about since she's attended the, many of the meetings from the state.
All right, so if we apply for it, that, is there a chance that just because, just because you apply, you don't automatically receive? Is that right?
No, no. We, we already met on all the qualifications.
We've met the qualifications?
We've met all the qualifications that, that are required by, by the USDA. We've met all the qualifications that, that are required by, by the USDA. So what I would just do is I, I would fill out our normal agreement with the USDA and check the box that we're going with the community eligibility.
So we have it if we want it?
We can if we want it.
Okay.
Cleveland City and also Montgomery County, and I haven't checked with other superintendents, I just noticed on the news a few weeks ago that they have moved to that. Did talk with principals about it, presented to them. The benefits that they see, among other things, is, as far as collecting charges, there would be no need to do that, none of the phone calls or the paperwork that's associated with that. So that's, that's a benefit, too.
But this is a four-year program?
We would apply now and we would lock in, there's a multiplier, we would lock that in for four years. But at the end of this year, this upcoming school year, if we chose, if we look at it and it's not what we feel is in the best interest of the students, then we can opt to, to come out of the program.
What would be the negative side of it if we don't apply for it?
What would be the negative side if we do not apply for it? Then our students will still have to pay for lunch.
And... Price increase?
Yes, yes. We would have to go up in our pricing according to the USDA regulations.
Okay. All right, now, Ms. Smith?
Is the quality, I mean, is there anything that's going to be different about the quality of the food?
Not at all. Actually, next year, we're rolling out garden bars at every one of our schools. So there'll be even more fresh fruits and vegetables available to our children.
So will the garden bars, which I, in theory, I'm enthusiastic about that, by the way. Are they all going to be in the little plastic containers where you have the little plastic of carrots and the plastic of the cucumbers and the, or is it going to be like a regular salad bar?
It will be pre-wrapped, just to the, to the cleanliness, the hygiene issues that we...
So instead of a prefab salad, you have options?
No, we will also have pre-made salads as a third option to the line. So you'll have two hot options, a pre-made salad, and then you can also go to the garden bar and get all the vegetables and fruits that you would like.
For the salad? For, I'm sorry, what's a garden bar if it's not a salad bar?
It's just fresh fruits and vegetables that's going to be available to all the kids that come through the serving line.
Okay, great.
So what's the difference between the garden bar and the salad bar?
Well, salad bar would be your option, that would be your main entree. So the garden bar is going to be in addition to the main entree, just to make sure our children have the access to the fresh fruits and vegetables.
Is the garden bar pre-wrapped?
It will be. Each individual, it'll be, we'll bag each individual, we'll slice the cucumbers, slice the tomatoes, the fruit, and we'll bag them ourselves and, and put them out there for the kids to, to take.
Okay. Ms. Rehne?
Is this, this is going to be prepared by our cafeteria staffs, or is this coming to us packaged like much, some of the breakfast foods?
We're hoping that most of it will come, we'll, we'll bag ourselves, we'll prepare fresh in our cafeterias daily.
I don't mean to be disrespectful, please, please understand I'm not, when you say you're hoping, that kind of leaves it wide open. Do you, do you have the requirements yet, or, or is that spelled out from the federal government? Because...
As far as the garden bar?
I'm sorry?
Are you talking as far as the garden bar?
No, just everything in general. Because, you know, we had such an issue last year about do we do breakfast in the classroom? Don't we do breakfast? And, you know, I was in the schools the first week, and though it was a little difficult with the young children, kindergarten, first grade, everyone fell into it very quickly and the teachers were pleasantly surprised. However, I've, the only comments I hear now are things, negative comments about the foods, that there are a lot of prepackaged and a lot of carbs and not protein. And so that's, that's where I'm going with this. If we knew what those choices were going to be, and are you cooking them, or are we getting this in a package?
The lunch choices will not change. They, that standard will not change at all.
Okay.
As far as the prepackaged breakfast, the USDA requires that we meet X amount of grains before we can introduce into proteins.
But there's a huge war going on right now about that.
It is. It is. And not, not within us, but in Washington.
Yes.
Okay, good, well, that's a positive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Phil?
Yeah, I'm kind of right there with everybody else, because, you know, I'm back in the day when we had these fabulous cafeteria managers who cooked fabulous food and the kids ate it and loved it. And, and, you know, we hear comments about the quality of the food, and I mean that with no disrespect at all. I know you all have to do, follow so many federal guidelines about sodium and one thing and another, that it makes it very difficult. And that's why we have our chef. Now, with, with that said, so there are two, let me, I'm not sure I quite understand, there's going to be a hot, two hot choices for the children, where there'll be vegetables included with those hot choices?
Yes.
Okay, so then in addition to that, they can go over and choose some vegetables from what you call the garden bar?
Correct.
And in addition to the garden bar, there's also a salad bar?
No, there's pre-made salads.
Okay, so, so there are pre-made salads? And if they opt for a pre-made salad, that is their main entree?
That's considered their main entree, yes.
Okay.
But they can still get items off the garden bar, plus the hot vegetables, plus fresh fruit.
Oh.
Okay, okay, okay. So now, do those salads, the pre-made salads, do they have a protein source in them?
Yes, they do.
Okay, is it cheese or what is it?
We do hummus, we do cottage cheese, we do eggs, we do some cheese, we do chicken, diced chicken, we do chicken salads. It's a variety of items. We make those in our cafeterias.
Now, if they do this, if we sign up for this program, are you going to be even further limited by what you can offer the children than, than we already are?
No, not at all.
Okay.
Not at all.
This really will not impact as far as the food itself. It will not impact it, right?
Not at all.
Okay.
Ms. Smith?
To go back to the breakfast in the classroom, which some schools opted out of that, what's happening with that now? We're going to say schools could opt out.
Well, what I've asked the principals is for us all to go to breakfast in the classroom because what we've seen as far as the results of that has been beneficial. I've really not seen the negatives. So I've asked the three remaining schools that we also go district-wide next year.
And what have the principals said? Yes, ma'am?
I haven't gotten, well, I haven't got anything back. I can share with you the data of what we've seen. In fact, I asked, this really does, this, what we're discussing now doesn't have anything to do with breakfast in the classroom, but what we've seen with breakfast in the classroom is the number of students that, that have had breakfast, we've certainly seen that increase. The negatives, as Ms. Rehne said, I'm just not hearing them now. And I didn't hear them, I was in the school shortly after that. So I think that, that it, as far as the benefits we've seen, it's certainly worthwhile for the students for us to go district-wide next year.
Ms. Rehne?
The students will also be able to bring lunch from home if they choose to, as they've been doing, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Phil?
Since we did mention breakfast in the classroom, I understand the desire for consistency. I, I know that you're going to respect the principals, though, on this. My main concern is this. When we first, when it was first approached, brought to the board, we were told that the children would have this time where they're eating breakfast to intermingle, to talk with each other. And that is okay with me, because that's what, it's supposed to be a social time, eating. What research shows us, though, is that children who are distracted, watching screens, doing work, they don't register, their brains do not register that they are eating. And if the children are having to do what we used to call bell work, or work like that while they're doing their breakfast, it's like we have opposing components of philosophies here. We want to, we want to support nutrition and healthy choices. And at the same time, if we're asking our children to do bell work while they're eating, that goes, that flies in the face of that. And that is my primary concern. I want to be sure that the kids are not being taught an unhealthy habit.
Okay.
Ms. Phil?
Mr. Barrett?
I think it's great, you know, having our children fed, you know, breakfasted and we don't have to worry about them coming to school hungry anymore. I think that's a great idea. So it starts this coming year, right?
Correct.
Okay. And likelihood of getting, of us getting this is pretty much 100%?
Yes.
Or, okay. And I think that was the only question. That was it? Thank you for getting us, putting it together and presenting it.
Any other questions?
So if you have breakfast in, in the classroom, and you're, and you don't want your child to have breakfast in the classroom, what does one do?
Well, that's, that's already happening now. I don't have the statistics on the increase. Do you have it with you, Mr. Anderson?
Sure.
Okay.
Participation at breakfast went up a total of 30.99% of kids eating breakfast. Some schools went up quite a bit, other schools didn't go up as, as much. And some schools, the schools that did not participate in the breakfast in the classroom program actually dropped participation at breakfast, it actually went down. So overall, it was 30.99% increase of students eating. Overall, it was 68.97% of our kids ate breakfast.
I've, I've not heard any stigmas. In fact, I can tell you, my grandson doesn't, doesn't eat breakfast in the classroom just because he doesn't choose to. That's certainly something I can talk with the principals about, but I've not heard any negatives from them about it.
So that's, so they can choose on a day-to-day basis?
Right.
Are kids doing bell work while they eat?
I will find out about that and I can handle that.
Okay.
Because, and one, one thing that I think will help solve that problem is that with moving toward the CI3T and the OVS, that the morning meetings are required, that's something we'll have. So what I'm hearing is that's when the morning meetings are taking place, too. But I can, I can extend that to the futures.
Ms. Barrett?
I'll make a motion, we approve the grant, or to go forward. Do we have to make a motion?
Do we need a forward action on that, Sandy?
I didn't know if you needed one or not.
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Go forward then.
All right.
We don't need a motion.
We don't need a motion.
We didn't have any paperwork on that.
I have a 10, a 9 waiver of TCAP scores.
Okay, for, for the public, I'd like to give a little bit of background of what this is about. State law requires that TCAP scores are included in grades three through 12. And, and the way they are included is they are included as, as the board voted, you could do 15 to 25%, the board voted to do 15% of the semesters, the second semester is grade. The difficulty was that we received, and it was the, back of the 20th of, of May and the 21st of May, were pretty active days, because we received about 2 o'clock information that the scores would be late, as much as perhaps six weeks. And we didn't know at that time until we received a phone call later in the day at about 4 o'clock, that we could request a waiver. So we actually had prepared a letter to be sent home to parents, saying that the scores would be delayed, that the teachers would come back in after the school was dismissed and prepare the report cards and send them out, and would include those scores. But when we received notification from the state that we could request a waiver, we did put in that waiver, and we knew that the next day was going to be our last day with the students. And so that's one reason that we did request the waiver. We received that waiver, and so the report cards went out without the 15% on them. And many school districts also had that same situation. We do need a board vote, though, because board policy says that that has to be included. I have been in communication today twice with Don Odom and once with Dr. Ash, who is from Central. There has been concern expressed about those students who would be going into any schools that require merit admission, that would involve the final grade from the report card. And so what we have been able to work out with Mr. Ash and also, with Ms. Odom and Dr. Ash, and any other situations that would be similar to that, is that we're actually going to, for the Central students, they are going to provide us with the name of the applicants who are city school students. And we will go ahead and hand figure the 15% into their scores and submit that. According to Mr. Odom, he is not expecting, and also Dr. Ash, as a matter of fact, many students to be in those categories. But if there are students that are in the category, that they would need that final grade, then we certainly want to provide those students, because we want our students to be as competitive as any other students would be. So that, that is the way that we are planning on handling that situation. As I've said, I can't tell you, actually, Mr. Odom and I were talking the day that we learned about these scores, and, and we were trying to figure out what would happen if, if, because they had another week of school and we didn't. And so I think that, that it's, it really makes sense for us to provide those scores to those students who are needing the scores. And probably that will come from a request from the school, it could come from a request to the parents. But we do need a vote from the board to go ahead and waive those TCAP scores for our third through sixth grade students, so that we don't have to put those on the report cards.
Okay.
Mr. Campbell?
Ms. Smith?
Okay. There's been a lot of talk among parents about the TCAP scores, and, and I have to say that it weighs very heavily on me. I have a big document to tell you all this. Unfortunately, the reality is that teachers and students are encouraged all year long to work hard and be prepared for the TCAP. And our young students did their jobs, and the teachers did their jobs, but the state did not. Parents across the system shaped their calendars and their lives around test time, and they did their jobs. It bothers me that teachers do not even, even know and are not allowed to know when they're on the test, what the test look like, and maybe the testing was different and we don't know. I would like a very good explanation from the State Department of Education about why the scores were delayed. It bothers me that we were, we are not following our own policy by not incorporating the 15% TCAP quick scores into the fourth quarter. We set this policy as requested by the state, and we should abide by it. Our district could have made different choices when the state told us the scores would be late. We didn't know how late they would be, and spending taxpayer dollars to bring our teachers back in to calculate the scores and didn't seem like the right thing for us to do. However, our teachers were in school, but we didn't know that when we were sending out our report cards. These scores not being incorporated into the fourth quarter do make a difference for some of our students' academic futures. They can make a difference for a child earning an A or a B for a quarter, or a B rather than a C, and vice versa. My suggestion regarding students applying to the merit-based schools outside the district, such as Central Magnet, but there are more, is that the transcript provided for the application incorporates the 2014 TCAP quick scores into the fourth quarter grades, as was originally required by our policy. Dr. Gilbert has worked out a solution with the county, and I appreciate your doing that, that these scores are to be included by the, for that quarter. And I do appreciate that the, the county understands the issue and that we will be able to have apples to apples when our students apply. The right thing to do for our children is to insert these scores at the beginning of the school year for the whole system, but I fear that ship has sailed. I'm waiting for the state to explain their tardiness and hope they have learned their lesson, and we hope we don't have this problem again.
Very good.
Okay. Well, I think I would have to commend our school system with the procedure that was taken with the notice, the late notice. And I don't think it's any, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out whose fault it was.
No.
It wasn't our teachers, it wasn't our, any of our instructors, our school system or Rutherford County School System. The problem dealt with the Tennessee State Department of Education. And hopefully, I don't know if you'll ever get a real good explanation, but I hope that you do.
I think that our students and our teachers and our parents deserve, and we don't need this to happen again.
Well, I...
What we plan is, you know, there, unfortunately, the TCAP is a goal, it's in the textbooks. Our textbooks have TCAP preparation. And it's, the state owes us an explanation.
I don't disagree with you. I think the state does. I'm just saying, I don't know that you get it, but if you do, we need to publish it probably, so everybody, everybody will know. I know there is a meeting next Monday that Dr. Gilbert and I are going to attend in Lebanon. I am sure that will be a topic of discussion. Maybe we'll get an answer. Don't be surprised, though.
Can we, can we as the board, or you as the director, do it for us? I know we write resolutions sometimes. Can we write a letter to Governor Haslam and Mr. Huffman and express our displeasure?
I think it would be, I think it would be appropriate to send to the commissioner. I will tell you that superintendents have expressed concern. And I will share with you that I just, today as a matter of fact, wrote the assistant commissioner and explained that what we need are very clear standards for what will be assessed. And there are a couple other things that I asked for, and I'll be happy to share that email with you all. But we were in communication the day that this happened, because they knew that there were school districts like us that were facing, some facing graduation that night when they received the information, we were facing students being released the next day, parents. And what I expressed is, we would have parents that would be moving out of, out of town, we would have teachers that would be moving out of town, that would not be able to come back and use those scores in. So we really felt that we didn't have a choice but to request the waiver. I did have some teachers who, the sadness, and it was, it was good that the sadness was there, but there were principals and teachers also who expressed that they were disappointed because they had talked about the celebrations they were going to have with their children. So I'm very grateful that, that, and I shared with them that I'm grateful that we've reached the point that people are looking forward to those assessments, because they believe so much in what they're doing. I think that there is continuing conversation between commissioner, the commissioner and superintendents about... superintendents about communication, and about understanding how far ahead of time we need some things. That still seems to be a concern, but I'm sure that that will be expressed on Monday, and several of us have, in a very polite way, expressed the concern privately.
That's nice of you to do it in a polite way. Because, you know, none of us felt that it was fair. Our, just as Mrs. Smith said, our children and our teachers worked all year long-
That's right.
-to accomplish this goal. And, you know, we know things were different, we hear rumors about scores and things. And it's just, when, when you've set yourself up and you're running toward that finish line, and suddenly there's no prize at the end, the prize being the scores, it's just, why do they bother to work next year? That's, I'm afraid, we don't want that perception.
Well, one of the, one of the things that came out in the original email, and, and Mr. Campbell and I actually were in a meeting when I walked out the door, and Karen Hawkins was there facing me, because she had gotten the email, is that this might be an ongoing situation, and I think that that is no longer going to be the case, because there, when you, when you have, it's not only this, but it's, it's certainly primarily, it's the students and their expectations. But it's also the fact that there is a law that says that we need to have the scores by June 15th, as far as tenure and some other situations. And, and yet, we're not going to get those scores. So it puts superintendents and school districts and boards in a, in a real predicament for what do you do about those situations, too. So I think there's some pretty hard conversations that have been had, and some continuing conversations that will be had. I have never seen, I saw the superintendent's listserv light up when the decision was made to link Lyshonshire to T-VS. I saw it light up a lot more when the delay for TCAP came in. And then I've seen it light up even more since then with some things. So I think that the whole TCAP situation this year has certainly brought some, some things to light that just cannot stand.
I think that we all, doing what we're doing, appreciate the fact that the dates were pushed back later, as far as taking the, the state assessment. But if we can't, if they can't accomplish the goals, then, you know, it's a moot point.
That's right.
So, but it's just disappointing.
You can't, you can't deal with two different state laws that are countering each other.
Right. It's disappointing for everyone.
Right.
And I think most, all of us that have been involved in the profession can go back and say that test scores never have been back-
Right.
...before teachers left, except, well, maybe last year they came back, but I don't-
They were, they were back. The quick scores, we got early. The official scores, scores are later, but the quick scores, we got it early enough last year. We got those the week before, the week before that. Two weeks before three.
The student scores are the ones that have to go on the permanent records.
But we can, we can live with the quick scores. But this was that we weren't going to get the quick scores out for another four to six weeks.
Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to say something. I want to take a moment and thank Ms. Smith for taking the time to organize and share your thoughts. You know, you've identified this is a very important topic that needs to be acknowledged and addressed, and, you know, unfortunately, we're not the ones able to address it. But we're, we are grateful to the, the teachers, and the parents, and the children, who gave their all to succeed, and, and make it a fun atmosphere instead of a grueling toil. So, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
A lot of, some, some children have their quick scores, because teachers have emailed them, and other children don't have their quick scores. How, how are, are, the schools are closed. How can they get the quick scores?
We have had several folks that have called our office and asked for the scores, and we've been able to give them. The thing that we, we ask is, we have to make sure that that parent is legitimate. So instruction is handling that. We've had several parents that have called and asked for that.
So they may call the-
Right.
-your office. Dr. Lyndy Gilbert's not, they can call, they can call the school board office.
They can call instruction.
Okay.
And her cell number is?
Yes.
She stays up here.
Okay. Well, look at the draft agenda for-
Mr. Campbell, I do need a vote on that. I do need a vote on that waiver. Otherwise, we're out of compliance.
All right.
Well, on the vote, we're talking about the waiver, but can we somehow include about your coordination with the county? I don't know how to, I, I just want to make sure it's done.
I, I have no, I have no problem with that. I would certainly welcome a, a vote that would say that we would waive the TCAP scores as far as the student report card, but that we would collaborate with those districts who are needing the scores, and have that as part of their requirement, that we would, for application purposes, supply that.
So moved.
But this is just for this year, oh, correct?
Yes, yes.
We hope this year we'll still-
No, next, next year, it is state law.
Next year could be a new ball, yeah, okay.
We have a motion by Ms. Smith to approve.
Second.
Ms. Phil, the second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? There it is, okay. Now, we look at the agenda for our June 24th meeting.
The one thing that you have on here, and I don't see it, but I know it's on here, because I know we talked about it today. The board does have to vote for tenure of teachers, and Melanie, who is, okay.
It's, action item C.
Okay, thank you. That will be dependent upon, we are supposed to get the T-VS scores, and that it has to be part of that, and we are supposed to get those the 15th of June. It's what we were told today.
Okay.
So I'm assuming we will have those.
Dr. Brown?
Just as a procedural point, the City Schools Foundation annual report, the VTR year-end report, are included in the consent agenda and in the reports and information, so it's included in there twice.
Ms. Barrett, can we add something?
Sure.
I want to have a discussion about doing a joint school board meeting with us in Rutherford County, again, like we did two years ago with the legislators. And we would host it this time. I know Rutherford County hosted it last time, but we, I'd like to see if we could host it this time, and invite them, and invite our legislators, state legislators, sometime in the fall.
Okay.
Well, what I-
Ms. Rehne?
May I? What I was going to hopefully add today that we couldn't do was that we need to have a retreat now that we have our new board member. And I don't know that we need to add it here, because I'm hoping that somehow we can pull it off before the end of June, so that we are ready for the new school year. I don't know if that's a possibility, or if we need to include here.
I think we should probably, maybe get some possible dates, not violating anything, Edie Kelly?
No. Y'all could send any dates that you, you know, dates that you either are or aren't available to Ms. Price, so she can figure out a date that'll work. So are you saying you want it before the end of June, or the beginning of school?
Before the beginning of school. As an explanation, four of us were at the TSBA advocacy session yesterday, and we got lots of really good information, and we thought it'd be good to share that. And we had some ideas that we got from that, that we thought we would like to implement for the next year. So that's the reason we thought a retreat at this time would be a good idea. But that needs to be done before we get into next school year, which is July, the end of July.
I think it probably needs to be done sometime during the month of June, because if we're not going to meet in July, August will be here before you know it.
Dr. Gilbert's looking more tired every moment we speak.
We're just trying all three schools, but I'm good.
We won't meet in July.
No, I'm good.
We'll meet in July. We could, we can have, it's scheduled that we can have a meeting if the board decides, or you decide that we need to, but, you know-
Maybe that could be our agenda for a July meeting.
Well, it could be, but-
You think it takes more time?
Probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, just from the information we got, I think it would, don't you think it'd be a little bit longer than a two-hour meeting?
It's a lot of information.
Well, I would say if, if you have dates in the month of July or the month of June that you would prefer maybe to have a retreat, if you will send those to Ms. Price-
Are we-
-as soon as possible?
Are we saying like an evening, or are we saying a Friday evening, or are we saying a Saturday, or does it matter? What are we going to pinpoint, so that-
My personal preference is it not be on a weekend in July. So if we can just provide our own dates.
Right. Well, because we're used to not meeting in July, many of us have travel plans in July, so that's why I thought, we kind of thought maybe it would.
In June?
Who are you laughing at?
I'm working.
Okay, you want to say, give, give Ms. Price dates in June? Is a, is a Friday afternoon, like we did before, starting about noon or 1:00?
I don't know if Mr. King is available with his work schedule.
I don't know either.
Me, too. I mean, it, Friday afternoon would be better for me.
Okay.
What about a Saturday in June, Ms. Smith? No, that won't work for you either.
Okay. So, but you're saying not in July is what you're pressing?
No, I'm saying I can do midweek better than I can do it.
A week in, in July or June?
Both.
Okay.
But don't, let's just send a date. I don't want to go through it.
All right.
How long would we anticipate this lasting? An afternoon, a day, a weekend, two or three days? It's-
No, not three or four.
Oh, month, month and a half, two months? I don't know. I would say probably a-
Three, four hours?
Yeah, evening.
You know, starting early, early part of the afternoon and-
Three or 4:00.
Yeah, maybe go till 7:00 or 8:00. I don't know what, I don't know what-
That'd probably be good.
Okay. All right. We'll get together and throw out some dates, and maybe we can have something middle of the week. Does that work for Phil?
It's doable. The later in the day, the better.
Okay.
But a Friday afternoon would be, would be good, too.
Okay, all right.
Personally.
I would like also for, on the agenda for our next meeting, perhaps, I'd like for us to look at the policy that we have that allows people to address the board at our meeting. All right, anything else to come before this illustrious body tonight?
I just want to thank the board for, for your, your support of the teachers and the schools, and understanding the, the tough job they have with some of the changes that seem to happen almost immediately, and having to adapt to those. It's pretty amazing. And I, and I also want to thank this board for, for adapting, because obviously, the agenda tonight changed over the last week, because of circumstances that we necessarily could not control. So I just want to thank you all for understanding the flexibility that we have to have, and for your having that flexibility modeled. So thank you so much for that.
Anything else? We're done.